I'd like to call a meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, February 13th, 2020 at 6:30. Would you take the... First order of business would be pledge allegiance to the flag. If everyone would stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, would you take the role, please?
Chairperson May.
Present.
Commissioner Steenburgh.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Walz.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion.
There's support?
Support.
Any comments? Discussion? Take the role, please.
Commissioner Steenburgh.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, next item is public comment on non-agenda items only.
Friend.
Approval of the minutes from last meeting.
Approval of... I jumped right over that. Okay, let me back up. Approval of minutes. For the regular meeting, January 9th, 2020. Yes?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve minutes. Any comments or corrections? Take the role, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenburgh.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Now we'll go on to public comments on non-agenda items. If anyone here who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, you can come forward now. Seeing none. We'll move on to the business items. First item, PC 19-009, request for site plan approval to construct a new commercial retail office building at 1847 Inster Road in the C1 local business zoning district. First, could we have your report, Mr. Ortega?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to look at the revised site plan for 1847 Inster. If you recall, originally, the applicant was proposing a slightly larger building than what you see in front of you right now, and they wanted to have four units. There were some other questions we had with regards to the location of the dumpster enclosure at that time and the parking requirements, most importantly. Since then, they've submitted this revised plan, and I do believe it's a very substantial improvement what was originally proposed. The applicant now has... Once again, this is a C1 zoning. They're proposing... They don't have any tenants at this time, so it would be a white-pocket situation. They would be leasing to a combination of office uses and retail. And as proposed, the... Having three of these units for office and one unit for retail will substantially conform with... Provided the specificity of each use, but specifically... Let me try it again. Will specifically conform to our standards. You look at, being on page two, the setback requirements as proposed. The building has been shifted to the south, but it's still in compliance with all our setback requirements for the front side and rear yard. One note that we do have with regard to the building, the width of the building has been reduced to reduce the size of the units. However, the elevations that have been provided for this building are still for the original construction. So we would say... We would request that revised elevations be provided to ensure that the proposed mix of materials and colors on the proposed building are of a significant... Of a high quality and to match what we've been approving in our corridors on Inster and on Middlebelt and Merriman. We typically have been approving buildings that have a mix of brick, drive-it, or some other material... A combination of materials on the facades and a combination of colors, rather than any one uniform color or uniform material. So that's something that we've been historically... We've been doing on the newest constructions, even outside the downtown, in other parts of the city. So that's a standard we've been usually having. So we just request the applicant submit elevations to indicate as such. As I mentioned, with their combination of uses now, if they... When... And this process will be confirmed after the building is constructed, because they... Each tenant will have to come and apply for a C of O. At that point in time, you know, the building department will review and ensure that that mix will meet the parking requirements. So as proposed, with this configuration and this parking layout, they will meet that... The parking ordinance requirements. One other thing I'd like to point out is originally, their plan had a driveway on John Hawk that was in close proximity to Inster. Now they've just eliminated the John Hawk driveways completely. And that's great for traffic circulation. It puts everything onto exit and entry... Entry and exit traffic directly on Inster, so that's a benefit for the residential neighborhood to the rear. So once again, it's a substantial improvement. And also, the dumpster has been relocated to the north side of the lot, away from the existing home that fronts on Inster, where originally it was proposed pretty much right up against that structure. One other piece of information that I would request is any... The details on the proposed lighting, including the pole heights, the cut sheet details, just to ensure compliance with our organ standards. And then finally, when you look at landscaping, you have a table on page three that indicates what's required for our individual standards for roadway frontage on both Inster and John Hawk, and the quantities. Right now, as proposed, they are deficient in terms of the number of shrubs and trees to be provided. However, one thing we would point out is that their proposed use of the green space along Inster is going to be a method of stormwater treatment, and it's going to use plantings that are usually pretty attractive, because they're... It's not necessarily wildflowers, but they're tall grasses and other types of planting. So as long as they're maintained correctly, they're very attractive. So you, as the planning commission, have the opportunity... Have the ability to waive the specific quantity requirements for trees and shrubs if you feel that the landscape plan as proposed will significantly add to the character of the site. However, it's up to you and your determination of what they are proposing is going to be attractive and meet the intent of our landscape ordinance. So in the end, we would recommend that you grant site plan approval for the site contingent upon the applicant submitting revised elevations, lighting details, and that the landscape plan either meets with your approval or they submit a revised landscape plan that indicates the type of quantity of species that you feel should be provided.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you care to come up and... Good evening. Is there anything you'd like to say about your application? I mean, right now, we have some deficiencies, as pointed out in Mr. Ortega's report. Are you prepared to fill in those?
We did everything that Mr. Mario asked us to do, whatever we needed to do on the plans. We fulfilled everything, so as of today, I don't know what else needs to be done, but we are willing, you know, whatever needs to be done.
Well, one of the things... Since you made changes to the building, we need a new elevation, new drawings for the elevation.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of his recommendations?
I included in the email that when I emailed you about today's meeting and the request to provide the additional plans.
Oh, no, that's the only one that I got, was the additional... That you needed some copies.
Yeah, I included the letter, too. And as I mentioned, it's... Those are the information that we request.
Okay.
Okay, along with the revised elevations, we would need lighting details.
Okay.
We need to discuss a landscape plan. Your... Your plan hasn't been approved by the county yet as far as stormwater retention. Is that correct?
Um, that I'm not sure. Do you know anything about that? I'm not sure about that.
Good evening. We did everything with Mr. Mario, what he asked for, and whatever needs to be done, we could do it on the field as soon as we start the project.
Okay, well, before we can give you final approval, you have to have approval from the county for both your curb cuts and your stormwater retention.
Okay. So that's my next step, to go to the county?
Yeah, you'd have to go to the county for that. Mr. Ortega can direct you about how to do that. But while we can give you conditional approval, your final approval isn't possible until those things are completed.
I understand.
So you're prepared to do those things?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to say about your plan?
No.
No, just started.
I know we've... We've asked in the past for some modifications, and you've done most of that, but there's just some details that have to be cleaned up now. And I think that's probably not a big issue, but it has to be done before you can get the final approval.
Okay, done.
Okay, well, thank you. If you have nothing else... Did you have a question for them?
Yeah. I don't see a notation on your elevation... On your new elevation, we'll need to have information for your dumpster enclosure, and I don't see anything about irrigation. The landscape requirements, the paper that you may not have gotten, it shows the Inster Road frontage as requiring 20 shrubs. You've provided none. It shows trees required seven, and you've provided two. So there's considerable deficiencies on landscape. And did you plan on having underground irrigation for this to support the green space?
Yes.
Without it, things tend to die in the summer here in Michigan. We found in the past that people won't necessarily put the sprinkler out there in the hose when the plants need it. So underground irrigation is something I'm looking for, as well as additional greenery. When you catch up with the information from Mario, you'll see on page... Let's see, page three, I guess it is, the landscape requirements. And it's almost totally deficient at this time. So I'd be looking at... On your new elevation drawings, I'd be looking for something that includes your dumpster enclosure so we can see the foundation and the construction and the building materials contained therein. And I'd like to see irrigation, and we have to have a lot more greenery than what's showing on this here. Wildflowers and wild grass won't be enough for me.
As soon as we get started, I mean, everything will fall in place.
Sure, sure. And of course, you still need it from the county on your underground retention, and so we can look at some of this at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's open this up to the commission. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? I had one about... You mentioned tall grasses in the area that they were going to use for water retention. Wouldn't tall grasses in that area be a site obstructive thing for traffic coming in and out of the parking lot?
Yeah, anytime that the site... That the grasses would get above... With either within 10 feet of the driveway in our clear vision triangle, or if they're higher than 32 inches, then they probably would... They would have to be cut back from that location. So that could be done with the seed mix to make sure that the seed mix only puts it there. But then maintenance, as I said, these are... They can be very attractive if maintained well, and that's another aspect of maintenance, making sure it's not blocking the traffic... Clear vision on the drivers.
Yeah, I don't think we want to plant anything there that needs constant maintenance to keep it at a certain level.
You know. You... The good thing about these is that usually, unlike normal hydroseed lawn, they don't need to be... They actually don't need to be mowed. They don't need to be fertilized, herbicides, pesticides, any of those type of chemical treatments. But they do need usually an annual maintenance program because of the way that they grow.
Yeah, because I've seen...
So it's once a year usually where it happens.
I've seen some of these grasses that grow six to 10 feet tall.
Yeah, but those are usually the invasive species, like the cattails, because though... And that's part of the problem with those is that those, because they're so tall, their root systems usually aren't as deep. The benefit of these species that they use is their root system is usually three times taller than what's above the ground. So unlike a Kentucky bluegrass, where, you know, if you go peel up your lawn, the roots are pretty short. When you pull up a root on one of these type of native grasses that were here before settlement, their roots are pretty deep, and that's why it helps with infiltration. But you are right that it has to be consideration in terms of clear vision and keeping the driveway.
Do you know if the county has accepted this type of...
Yeah, they have, actually.
Water retention in the past?
Yep, they have. And actually, they're starting to promote that more. They're in concert with Oakland County and Livingston County. They're trying to create uniform stormwater detention standards. So these are the type of standards that... Because right now, developers have to... Not to get into it. Right now, developers have different standards in the different counties. They're all trying to come together on one set, and that will include this type of use of plantings as an option. So they will permit that as an option.
Okay, well, yeah, if we're going to allow that, I think there has to be something to tell us we're not going to be planting grasses that are going to become a site hazard
Right.
for traffic. So I think... I think probably they're close enough to a good plan that we could approve it conditionally and let you, if you're willing to administratively take care of the remainder, if the board so chooses. Mr. Steenburgh.
Yeah. I'm not entirely comfortable with wildflowers and wild grass in lieu of trees and shrubs. Maybe a combination of both, but I don't want to see us abrogate all these requirements for grass.
This grassy area is only between the street and the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. The other areas have plantings
Yes.
with trees and shrubs.
Yep, normal hydroseed lawn and normal trees. So those could be enhanced with shrubs, like those trees that they're proposing exist on themselves. Usually, the beds around those trees sometimes can have traditional shrubs. And one other way to maybe mitigate the concern with the tall grasses adjacent to the driveway, maybe a certain distance away from the driveway, plant traditional shrubs, if that works for the...
Excuse me, but what am I reading here? Additional needed to meet requirements. On Inster Road, it shows shrubs. We need 20 additional shrubs and five additional trees. That's the only area in question with this retention pond and possible wild grasses. But I'd still like to see some kind of mixture thereof, not strictly a hayfield of wild grasses. And on John Hawk, it shows we're deficient of 15 shrubs and three trees. So...
Is there sufficient land area in those areas to plant that many?
From what I saw the other day.
On Inster, there is. I'm not sure, based on their proposed parking lot configuration. It looks like they have the curb right up to the... Pretty close to the proposed sidewalk on John Hawk.
Yeah, I see no room along John Hawk at all. There's a... Next to the dumpster, there's a small island, and at the corners of the buildings, there's a couple of small islands. But other than that, there's very little grassy area except the area between the sidewalk and the street.
Yep.
And we can't... That part of Inster Road doesn't really have much planting in that area that I can recall.
Right.
The... And anything that was done there would be another site hazard for traffic coming in and out, either turning off of John Hawk or coming out of their parking lot. So I think we have to be careful. Anything there would have to be low, and I don't know if that would take away from the value of the water retention or not.
Yeah, that's why I'm not... I'm not sure. My knowledge of this and how it actually functions is limited to what we've just been discussing. The engineer in Wayne County would have to make sure that if proposed, the... Every other component of it is sufficient. So if you wanted to, you know, go the other route and go with traditional, that's all. That's your prerogative.
Well, if we went with traditional, would it negate the possibility of using that as water retention?
No, absolutely not.
That I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure. I can't... From what I know, yeah, I mean, Mike Nomura and I...
Mike?
These items that we're talking about, this underground retention pond, is designed as a storage system.
They're not talking about putting in an underground retention. They're talking about having a grassy area that the water would soak into.
To slow it down before it hits Inster Road, that's all.
Right.
Underground retention would be way more expensive.
Yep.
When we look at these requirements, we had a similar situation with the banquet hall on Ford Road that wanted to extend their parking. If you recall, there was a concern about landscaping along... Pardo, what was it? Anyhow, there was a concern about the landscaping because they want to extend the parking lot essentially to the sidewalk and eliminate any need for landscaping. And we questioned it at that time, and I would question it again. You can't just take the parking lot and make that predominant over the landscaping.
But as you know, with these small lots, they have limited parking. And in order to fulfill the parking requirements on a small lot with a reasonable-sized business, they've already gone from mostly retail to part-business so they can meet the parking requirements. If they're forced to eliminate more parking spaces, they won't have...
I'm not looking to eliminate anything. I'm looking to add something.
Well, in the existing islands that they do have, we could probably add more shrubs. They already have trees in... From what I can see in those two islands.
Well, I'm not a landscape artist, but there's all kinds of things that can be done. There can be, whatever they call them, roving juniper that are flat and low to the ground.
The map juniper, yeah.
Succulents that are low to the ground that will never grow high, because that's not their nature. There's a lot of different things. Currently, we show deficiency of 35 shrubs and eight trees. I'd like to reduce that number somewhat. I'm not looking to reduce parking. And I've been here a long time. Parking has been a problem for the 22 years that I've been here. So I'm more than sympathetic to that. But I just don't want the property to be... Have a deficiency of over 40 landscape items. I think there can be some way to introduce a little more greenery in there to go along with the blacktop and the split-faced brick.
I think possibly some lower... Yes, I'm sorry, Diane.
The ornamental grass that I think that's what you guys were referring to, that actually does look nice. And I would be in favor to see a couple of that in the landscape thing. It gives a character. It is really nice. And it doesn't really... It's so thin. It blows with the breeze. And to me, I don't think it's really gonna obstruct the viewing of the traffic or whatever. You know, they can plant just a few in there. It does look nice. And there's all different types of ornamental grass that doesn't get real tall. They have small ones that don't grow that much, depending on what they pick.
Yeah, I mean, just being picky about what you plant is the key here.
Right, I mean, you know, you don't want something that's gonna have tails and all that. But, I mean, some of it would look nice there.
Yeah, I agree. Kevin?
When they're asking or talking about the ornamental grass and things, if you go down 696, when they redid it, 96, it's been down over in Livonia, where they shut it down from, what, Telegraph out to 275, I believe, that's what they're doing on the sides of the highway now. Instead of the grass that they've got to mow, that's what they're putting in. The only thing I'd want to regulate is definitely the height. My wife has some of this stuff at our house, and by the end of the season, it is six foot tall. And it all turns completely brown. You've got to cut it down in the spring or it's not going to come back right. Now, maybe there is some ornamental ones that will just rejuvenate themselves. Everything I've got there at my house goes out in a ton of yard waste bags first thing in the spring so that it will come back again. But that stuff does get easily six foot tall. But the stuff on the highway that they're putting in on the sides is staying low. If they use the right product... And I don't know what that is. Once again, I'm not... Someone else said I'm not a landscaper myself, but if they put the right product in, it should look just as nice as any shrubs and things out there.
Yeah, well, we have height regulations in areas where we have sightlines from driveways and
Right.
street corners. And as long as they're within the maximum height of these plants or within those regulations, then it should be fine.
Yeah, as long as it works out, as long as it's taken care of. I mean,
Yeah.
I can name half a dozen in the city that have been approved for other things, and now it looks like they're abandoned. A year into it, it looks like...
Maintenance is key.
Yeah.
Definitely. Well, we... We could approve it with conditions and allow Mr. Ortega to finalize this administratively, or we can insist on a more specific plan. But I think they're going to need a little bit of guidance in order to get them to where they need to be.
At the very least, I'd like to see a proper set of elevations before we do anything.
Well, that was one of the things that would be in...
Because this drawing is highly in... I don't want to see any more of those. That's ridiculous. You shouldn't need a magnifying glass to look at the property.
If we... I think if we approve it with these... With the conditions as recommended in the recommendations from Mr. Ortega, I think that would probably take care of it, and we'll put the burden on him for making sure that they plant the right kind of grass.
And the county.
Does anyone care to make a motion? Mr. Hunt?
Make a motion to approve PC number 19-009 with the conditions stated for the landscape, M dot approval, and new...
stated for the landscape, M dot approval, and new elevation plan for Mario to oversee and approve.
And Wayne County approval for the.
I said M dot, I'm sorry. Wayne County approval for the Inxter.
They also have to approve the curb cut.
Correct.
And I think we had dumpster enclosure details on the previous site plan, didn't we? On the first one?
Right. Dumpster enclosure details to match the building.
Dumpster enclosure details to match.
Okay.
Original plan.
Is there support?
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any questions, comments from the public? Should I take your role, please?
Commissioner Hunt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalitas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg?
Nay.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Okay. You're approved with conditions as recommended on Mr. Ortega's report. You can get together with him, find out what you need to do to comply with all those conditions. And wish you luck with your project. Next item of business, zoning ordinance amendments. This is discussion of revised zoning amendment language uses in the M one and other potential ordinance amendments. Mr. Ortega, you wanna start us off? And maybe we could go over these one at a time?
Absolutely. As you recall, at our previous meeting, I brought up the idea, the topic of doing some minor amendments to the zoning ordinance in discussions with some council members and other staff. We all come together and, and we all come together a various list of the, of some of the various issues that we, we had. Think there's a priority and could be bundled together into a set of amendments. The reason for this would be to try and get, rather than do an official public hearing and a motion and amendments on each individual one, you, at one, at multiple meetings. If we did them all at one meeting here, and then eventually one meeting at council, that's a one way to get it, do it more, a little bit more efficiently. And the intent being that these amendments would be relatively minor. So the first one in front of you was one that I, we brought up, I brought up at a previous meeting. It pretty much hasn't changed. It's the idea of looking at the, the M one district and revising the list of permitted uses in the M one to open it up to a wider variety of permitted and special uses. So that way, property owners would have the ability to have a wider range of tenants to, to look into. And also, keeping in key, in, in, in line with recent trends when it comes to industrial districts, specifically when it comes to private recreation. There are some recreation activities that require larger open spaces. Right now, they're permitted in our commercial district. This would allow private recreation, would create a definition for it, and then allow it in the M one as well so that that could be permitted. There, I have had some inquiries into some certain industrial sites for recreation, and they're just not allowed. I can't allow them because they're not listed as a permitted use in that district. So that's mainly that, what that amendment would be. And it also attempts to streamline, make our zoning ordinance a little leaner by, by adjusting the definition for manufacturing assembly, getting rid of some of those other uses that are specifically called out and allowing them to be out bundled into one type of use. That's the first one.
Okay. Comments on the First Amendment? As far as your, your definition of the private recreational uses, I'm, I'm down with that except I think it should not, not include firearms. We're not looking at having gun ranges, I don't think.
Yep. And that might be something where, in the end, might just have to specifically define gun range and then indicate where it would be allowed or not allowed, or where it would be allowed.
If we're going to do it, I think there should be a specific category for that.
Yep.
Any other questions about the First Amendment, Amendment A? Anyone in the public wishes to comment on Amendment A? Okay, move on.
Okay. The second goes into dealing with another issue brought up over the course of the past year and a half in my experience in administration. Right now, the only definition we really have for any kind of smoking, cigar, retail type of location is the smoke shop definition. And that definition doesn't specifically call out hookah lounges. We also have a generic definition, not even a definition. Well, yeah, there is a definition. Under restaurants for bar slash lounge. Recently, some of these light businesses that are licensed through the state health department have been interested in establishing themselves in the city. And I've been utilizing that existing smoke shop definition. That's what I've been hanging my hat on. However, this proposal would just be to strengthen that definition so I could specifically say hookah lounges are specifically defined and they are, would be specifically allowed in the C three as a special use. So this amendment creates a definition specific to hookah lounge or club. And then it indicates that it would be a regulated use. And as a side note, this is one of those minor amendments that would clear up a past. At it, at one point, our, our amendments allowed for medical marijuana clinics listed as a regulated use. That was under the MMMA Act, the First Medical Marijuana Act. Since that time, we've created a new ordinance for MMFLA, the Facilities Act, that requires a special use in the M one. And it doesn't allow, and this was forgotten, was forgotten to be removed. This is a leftover from that first ordinance. So this would be eliminate that, just to clean it up. And to allow, state that hookah lounges would be specifically defined and specifically be a regulated use only allowed in the C three district after special use approval. And as a regulated use, only one, once one is established, there can't be one located within a thousand feet of it as well.
Okay, the only thing I was wondering about was where it says, under your definition of hookah lounge or club, it says tobacco or other inhalants from a hookah, water pipe, or similar device. I'm wondering if we should say tobacco or other legal inhalants.
Yep, I like that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any, Mr. Hunt?
I've got a problem with the whole, the whole hookah lounge thing for a simple reason that a few meetings ago with council, someone was having trouble with the fact that people are smoking too close to the door out here at City Hall. Then it comes up, well, we're gonna try to regulate it. You won't be able to smoke in the park. You won't be able to smoke here, there. That's legal tobacco. Bars and restaurants had to completely eliminate tobacco and took one heck of a hit in their businesses because people cannot smoke inside a bar any longer. And you gotta be X number of feet away. Now we're gonna okay a smoking bar in town. I don't like that idea.
But they can't serve food or they cannot serve food in order, if they, if they serve food in a hookah, then they shouldn't be allowed to smoke inside.
Is that, is that not allowed by state law?
Well, that's what I'm confirming right now with the state. I'm playing phone tag. Right now, with the state health department and the, and our, and the person that represents, excuse me, regulates our area. To my, at this point in time, from what I know of, of, when I've, when I've been able to read, there are basically two type of licenses. One is a license for a cigar lounge in which individual people on their own get to go in and, and smoke cigars through, from humidor's and that sort of thing. And they have to be completely, they're, if they're adjacent to, or their business model includes any kind of food, the restaurant portion has to be located in a completely, in a separate screened location, adjacent to the bill, right next to the building, in the building. But they have to have their own different ventilation system and the different entrance and that sort of thing. And the food, as far as I can tell right now, isn't allowed to come into the cigar lounge, or cigar, cigar smoking area. Then, the, the other one is, is that hookah is apparently, I believe, is a different type of license simply because it's a shared device, and it's a shared device that gets used. And typically, and this is a part of their regulation. But typically, what happens then is because they don't normally have any kind of food or any kind of entertainment, it turns more into a, a, a club situation, which they have stage, loud music, you know, communal things, communal areas, seating areas. So it's a different, that use has a different character than like a cigar lounge. One way we might, one thing is, I think about it too, is we might wanna specifically also define as a cigar lounge. Cause I, if the definition, if their licensing is separate and different, so then maybe cigar lounges can be allowed in certain places where the hookah is not, is not, only because of the different character of the use. I don't know, that's an option. Or we could just leave cigar, if we left, we didn't even have a cigar lounge definition, then technically, I think it could be interpreted as a bar slash lounge and then allow wherever bars slash lounges are permitted.
Are hookah lounges allowed to have alcohol?
That I don't know. That's one of my questions I'm trying to get the answer to.
Yeah, I think those questions need to be answered before we can really make a decision on that one. Yes, Mike?
On the original smoking ordinance, I understood it to be in the smoking area, they cannot serve you food. But you could go in and acquire food and bring it to that area. It's a slight variation, but.
Yeah, I think, I, that's what I thought too.
That's what I remember from the original smoking ordinance, that is it concerned bars.
Right. And so I'm not sure, like, to what, if that's supposed to be, you know, you can't, can you? Is it like, um, um, different kinds of breweries? Breweries where they don't have food in there, but the brewery, you can order from a pizza place, the pizza place two blocks away or three blocks away, and they can come in and drop it off and deliver that. But I think what it is, is that you can't have someone come and serve it to you? I'm not sure what the difference is.
Pairing the food and all that.
Yeah, pairing the food there. Cause I know, I mean, obviously, some breweries have full kitchens and others have minor food menus, but I think that is a different type of license. So that's why I wanted to get, I wanted to research it with the state and make sure our definition lines up, within the licensure, lines up with what the state regulates. Cause why reinvent the wheel if they're the ones that are regulating it anyway?
There's a place up by my brother's, Stables Lounge. And it's a bar and a restaurant first, but they built a fairly elaborate smoking area adjacent to it. They can't bring the food out to you, but you can order it. And they'll tell you when it's done, and you just walk up to the end of the counter and bring it out. I guess the distinction is, if you don't mind other people smoking while you're eating, you can make that choice. But they can't make the choice and bring it out there. So, I don't know, maybe that's a clarification. Talk to the state.
Yep. And I think for us, and since what we're trying to, trying to regulate is this idea of, I guess, you know, distinction of the lounge area, or, or a, a club, excuse me, a club versus an actual lounge, a lounge, I guess. And that hours of operation and the additional uses in the, in the site are, have more of a impact on their neighbors. So if it's a club situation, if they're loud music, if they're open till two AM, that would require special, should be requiring special use approval. So at least that we know what's be, what's going on and making sure everything else is dotted, just like we do with any other special use. And treat them equally, just like any other special use. Whereas some of them, if they are, don't, if they, their nature doesn't have that kind of club atmosphere, then maybe then that's a permitted use or a different type of use.
Yeah, Kevin?
As long as we can re, regulate hours, because I've been out in the middle of the night at certain times of the year, and these hookah lounges are running until four, five o'clock in the morning during
Ramadan.
Ramadan and things like that. I don't know whether holidays, but I've seen that one where they're lit up and making all kinds of noise all night long, where at least the bar is closing at two AM and done.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, Mike?
The, the fact that we have so many banquet halls that are coming into the city, I think would be good to iron out these details before we proceed on this. Because I could conceive of banquet halls that might put an awning or annex an area for smoking, hookah.
Hookah lounge in the banquet hall.
Bring the food out on the patio, kind of a thing. I could see that evolution taking place, especially since we have quite a number of banquet facilities that are interested in the city right now. So I think we should kinda
Yeah, I can see that.
See where we're going on that.
Come together.
And by having this definition, it'll, you know, ensure that there's no ability for someone to say, oh, well, it's just, even if they can try and say, oh, it's only a portion of my business. Well, the way the definition is written, it's like any establishment or corporation. So in that case, they would fall under the, any portion of it that's utilizing it for, for this type of club atmosphere would then have to get special use approval and only be located in C three. So they couldn't be located.
Would be in C three, and it's also a regulated use.
And regulated use, yes. So I think for this one, I definitely need to confirm any kind of.
Yeah, before we decide on a public hearing on that one, I think we need more information.
Yep.
Any other comments about, any from the public? Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, next one. Amendment C is about site plan approval for minor modifications. Currently, the ordinance does allow any kind of site plan that's recently received approval to have a minor modification, even doing some type of minor addition to square footage. But a site plan has to be received and on file at the city. A lot of, and also currently, whenever an existing vacant commercial site, excuse me, wants to establish a new business, usually that process only involves them coming in to the building department, applying for a commercial CFO, myself or any, you know, of the planner reviewing and making sure that it's a permitted use in the district. And then allowing, then signing off on it and allowing it to go through the rest of the process, getting their inspections and getting, getting, getting eventually a commercial CFO once all their code compliances in place. We have had some cases where various existing businesses and existing non-residential uses needed to either put in, construct an accessory structure, such as some of the churches have recently wanted to do their accessory structured garages for like their buses or their outdoor storage. Or the most, the one that keeps popping into my head is a Michigan Arts Center over on Block. They wanted to do a seven hundred square foot addition. It was a small addition to the existing building, but they needed to come in for site plan approval. So this is an option that would amend the zoning ordinance. That, so that way, the, those type of existing businesses, they're already existing, that wanted to do a minor addition. They could, rather than having need to already have a site plan on file, they could create a site plan, have that submitted administratively. have that submitted administratively, and then have that approved administratively, provided that it doesn't go, you know, it's not a wholesale change, it's not to, it's not to another zoning district, a different type of use. It would clear that up. And this, these language amendment, these language changes would also eliminate, because right now, technically, any change of use requires coming to, coming for site plan approval, technically right now, based on the interpretation of this current language in our ordinance. So these are various things in which Paragraph A is revised to indicate, uh, what site, when site plan is required, which is any type of construction, uh, for, uh, brand new on-site, that's for a brand new, uh, structure, would have to come for approval, and anything that is, that is considered not minor, and we'll get into that definition in a second. And then this, this, this revision also moves what's currently under minor modifications into a new section, and then alters those slightly. So that specifically, a minor modification would be any addition to an existing building that not, does not increase or decrease the floor area by more than 25% or 3,000 square feet. I don't know about those numbers. Those are the existing numbers that are currently in the, in the ordinance. But then it goes into, uh, um, have other requirements stating that a minor site modification has to be reviewed by zoning administrator, has to be in compliance with every single standard of the ordinance. If anything requires special use approval, it still has to come to planning commission. If anything requires any kind of variance as part of the review, it still has to get reviewed by planning commission first, um, and that sort of thing. And then it goes on to list the specific information for a minor site plan amendment. And, and this is an attempt to, uh, look at, uh, the existing businesses, if they want to invest in the city, re, and stay in the city by doing an addition, because they're doing well, kind of streamline the process for them. So that's one of the reasonings behind it.
Okay. I had a couple of things about the mining, minor, uh, modification definitions. I think, I don't know, it seems to me that 25% and 3,000 square feet is pretty large.
Significant.
To be called a minor modification. I think, you know, if we're gonna do this, I think those numbers should be reduced somewhat. I don't know what the, a good number would be, but, uh, significantly less than those numbers. And then...
10% maybe?
Well, I mean, we, if you're gonna think of a, say, a 4,000 square foot building, uh, 25% to 1,000, but then we're allowing 3,000, is it, is, which is, the, which is the greater, which is, which is allowed in that case? I'm not sure it's clear about that either. Uh, but I think maybe if we, if we look at something, something in the middle like 15% and, uh, I don't know, if we're looking at a large building, couple thousand square feet isn't much, but if we're looking at most of our buildings, that's a, a pretty big addition. So maybe we should look at 15% and 1,500 square feet.
Even 1,500 is...
That's a, that's a reasonable size addition, because that's bigger than most of the houses in Garden City.
I think anything over a thousand ought to come here.
A thousand square feet.
You think a thousand would be better?
15% or a thousand, whichever's the greater of the two.
Uh-huh, yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to me.
That's a pretty big addition, thousand square feet, yeah.
Yeah, that would have taken care of the, the art center. They, they would have fallen within that. And I think most, most, uh, minor additions would, would fall into that too. So, why don't, why don't we think about penciling in then, uh, those numbers, 15% and 1,000 square feet? And then, number two, it says requiring, requiring improvements to site improvements. Is that language the, what we want?
I think it probably should, so we could say, we actually have a building by permitting use requiring modifications to site improvements, so that would...
Yeah, maybe that makes more sense.
Makes more sense, that word. And that would be like if they need to reconfigure the parking lot to make it circulate better, or, uh, that sort of thing.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions about this amendment? Anyone from the public have some? Oh, Kevin, I'm sorry.
One, um, back to section, excuse me, section one on that, a change in building height. You're calling a minor modification. Need a little more on there than that, because...
Well, it does say later on, doesn't it, that all of the changes have to fall within current regulations?
Correct.
So...
Okay, all right.
If the ordinance says it can only be 25 feet tall, a change in height would still only allow it to go up to 25 feet.
Okay, right.
And higher than that, they'd need a variance, and then it wouldn't fall under this anymore.
If they want to presume.
Yeah.
And the idea behind that just being, if they're existing in the footprint, then going up and meeting our, as long as they don't exceed our regulations, in theory, they, that's be minor.
What is our current height requirement?
Uh, by district, usually, I think it's 30 feet in the residential, and then, uh, uh, I'll tell ya.
34?
35?
We ran into it with the, um, apartment complex on Merriman. That two and a half story business where they wanted to add on and make it a regular three story, but they were a few feet over. Did we ever change that, or...
That, I don't know if that's ever, I pretty sure...
I thought that got changed.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but maybe we just talked about changing it, but I thought that got, I thought that got changed to where we kept the height the same, but we allowed three stories within the height.
Right now, it's not. Right now, at least if, in the straight table for schedule regulations, maximum height is 35 feet in every district except for M1, where they can go up to 40. But in every district, maximum height is two and a half stories.
Two and a half story, yeah, see, I... I thought that got changed, but apparently not.
That might be one of those places in which it was intended to be changed, but it never got changed. So just changing the table to three stories, that could be a minor amendment. If, if you wanted to do that.
Yeah.
What are we considering a story? Is, uh, what's that considered for?
One floor.
12 feet?
Well, normally, but it can vary.
Commercial, it's 20.
It can vary, but if they want to put three stories within a 35-foot building, it, they're limited.
Well, yeah, I'm trying to figure out, if we're gonna allow them three stories, then maybe we want to look at that height and allow them to actually put...
The reason we didn't want to change the height is because our, our ground ladders from the fire department only are 35 feet tall, and they'll go to the balcony on a third story, but they're not gonna reach the roof. And so we could make that change without creating a big problem.
My thinking is, if it's 12 feet and we raise it one foot and make it 36, then we're actually letting them build a three-story building. Would that negatively...
Why can't they make it an 11-foot story?
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the standard for, for commercial...
Residential ceilings are only eight foot, so if they, if they have three foot in between, that, to me, is plain.
What is the, what is the measurement for a story?
That, that's, you, it does vary. I do know that this is occurred with other type of requirements. Usually it's when the height is 30 feet. Um, 35, you know, I would think that's one of the reasons why you go up to that height. Also, in, for, for, depends on the type of roof as well, because we measure the height between midpoint, between peak and eaves. So at least for multifamily structures, they could get three feet, three stories out of 35 feet, by the way they, um, designed the third floor. However, for flat roof structures, that's where you get, you might get into an issue. Um, I don't know specifically the building code, but I do know there have been instances where sometimes, when you go, I thought what it was is when you go to a third story, that first floor, for some reason, because of the structural supports, need to be almost 15 feet tall, I think. And I don't know if that's just a def...
You're gonna be running a mechanicals in between.
Right, and that's the issue, the mechanicals.
Because they're raised up on the foundation.
Right, and then the mechanical...
You got two and a half feet.
And what are you measuring to the means, or are you measuring to that peak?
Right, usually it's the peak on a flat roof. I mean, uh, on a pitched roof, it's a midpoint between peak and eaves.
We don't allow mansoor roofs, do we?
Not in Central.
I know Westland does, because they're all over the place.
I don't know about the rest of the town.
In the rest of the town, we probably do allow mansored roofs in, because actually, some people do tend to do that in our accessory structures, because our accessory structures only allow a 10-foot sidewall. So how they get around that is they do a mansored roof, and then they get that second story, or that loft-type space in an accessory structure, because the building height and the wall is only 10 foot. But then the roof, like, you know, 22 or whatever it is.
Well, this is something that we can look at.
And I can ask the, uh, building department what they feel is necessary for the minimum, what code require, what code requires for stories. And if that's something we want to...
Then we have to bounce that against the requirements for the fire department.
Absolutely.
That would have to go by the fire department and see how they feel about it.
Yeah, they can check with, uh, fire...
I mean, currently, we have a 35-foot limit, and they're dealing with that. If we're gonna raise it, we need to see how they feel about it.
Yeah.
I'll donate a 40-foot ladder till I want it anymore.
Was there any public comment on, uh, this amendment? Hearing none, move on to the next item?
Next item is regarding to, uh, modifications to legally non-conforming signs. Currently, the paragraph as written, um, only allows existing legally non-conforming signs to alter their face, uh, not, to not alter their face. They have to, um, here's the say. Sign is, uh, in paragraph C, it's specifically said, the sign is restored to its original design. So right now, if, if someone has a, technically, if someone has a legally non-conforming sign, uh, and they want it to, typically, what we call swap out the plastic, you know, if it's a, if it's a metal-framed pole sign or ground monument sign, and then they have a business in there with the typeface, even if that existing business, like, changed their logo, technically, the way this is written, they can't even change their logo, they can only refresh that logo to the original design. So this is something in which it would allow people to swap out the plastic for new, for the new tenant. Most, uh, obvious situation with this is, uh, Sunoco, they changed their logo, and they're wanting to put in a new logo, and technically, they weren't supposed to. So this would just merely change that. Anytime, and it would still be required if the sign, if the structure itself, the pole and the, or the base and the, the frame is unsafe or, uh, doesn't meet code, it would have to be taken down and come into compliance still. But it would allow businesses that have existing signs to reutilize them for new tenants, without any situ, without any, uh, restriction from the ordinance.
The only issue I had about this was on, uh, Section D, Paragraph 2. Why do we want to eliminate height and area? Says the sign, sign shall be brought into compliance with, and we're eliminating height and area.
Um, that's to, for, if the structure is legally non-conforming, from back, from prior to the ordinance, they could still change the face and not have to change, suddenly change the height of the sign.
It's because of legally non-conforming.
Because back, for example, the most, uh, most, although they come up with a good solution, um, Leon's Restaurant right on Ford, um, they were taken over by the, uh, purchased by the new, um, new chef, and he wanted to just swap out the plastic. And he, um, couldn't, because, number one, because of the change in the plastic, but then, number two, because he did have to get rid of, the height was too high, so that's why he ended up lowering the sign. Uh, so in theory, that, that could be the solution that most businesses could do, is just lower the sign to, to be in compliance. This is ju, was just an idea.
By, by requiring that, it, it encourages people to bring their signs into compliance.
True, yeah.
Like, if, if we have a roof sign, which we don't allow, but there are a few around, and they want to fix it up, you know, they're gonna have to put it someplace else.
Right.
Or make it more compliant with the code in some way. I'm...
Yeah. We're just taking a negative situation and perpetuating it. It seems like, you need a new logo, you need a new face.
Yeah, it can go on forever that way. You know, if, this way, if they want to change it, they've got to bring it into compliance.
Yeah, and that's definitely one, the other way to go. I mean, Miss Valleys do it one, this way, which it does, um, it's a little bit more allowing the tenants to, like you said, just do the logo and only pay for that. But others do, other communities do go the other way, and the other ones do say, come into compliance completely with, with...
When, when would we have them come into compliance?
Otherwise, we, otherwise, we'll never make them.
If it was structurally unsafe.
That's the only time.
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
But we're already allowing them to fix it up, so it's not structurally unsafe, so...
Signs like the humongous sign, which was very popular at one time for, uh, former Kmart. With a new business going in there, uh, we're gonna have a very attractive monument sign, which will advertise the business, I think, equally well, and, and be in modern compliance. So I don't think this is a good idea. We're, we're perpetuating what we don't want. If we don't want it, if it doesn't matter, just do away with the ordinance, and you can do whatever you want with the signs, whenever you want to do it. But if we're gonna have a sign ordinance, then I don't think we should make non, uh, non-compliance, uh, a greater intensity by ordinance. It doesn't make sense to do that.
How does everybody else feel about the sign ordinance? Any other comments? No? Any? Yes. Counselor?
I just have a question. If, if, if they're legally allowed right now, they're legally conforming.
Well, they're legal non-conforming.
Legally non-conforming, but we're not making them change them. So they'll never change regardless?
They, but they want to change it.
This, the way I understand it, from what you guys are saying, is if, uh, say it's a pole, and it's unsafe, they're gonna have to change, change the whole thing. They can't put up another legally non-conforming sign. Otherwise, a sign that's, uh, what, uh, they changed owner or whatever, the, the signs faded, uh, anything that they want to redo to the, the sign, they can now go and fix it up, so at least it looks nice, is, is the way I'm, I'm understanding.
Yeah, this would allow them to fix it up and continue using that sign for as long as they wanted.
Until it's unsafe, which they can do anyways. They just can't fix the sign.
Well...
Right? I mean, is, is that the way I'm reading it? Right, okay, so if it's a logo, if they're just changing the logo, and the, the pole itself is safe, they can still just change, right now, they could change it. So now you can have a faded, you know, ugly looking sign.
Well, we're saying they can do minor maintenance on it.
But if they're changing their logo, you, the way it's written now, they won't be able to change it. So they're kind of stuck with whatever's listed.
Well, it says painting servicing, cleaning, or minor repairs to a non-conforming sign shall be permitted. So that would allow them to do quite a bit.
General maintenance.
General maintenance. They can, they can make it look good. Now, if it doesn't look good, if there's something wrong with it, we, the city, from our new ordinance, can cause it to be removed. Now, do we want to allow signs that are non-conforming to continue forever? Or at some point, would we like to see them come down?
I'd like to see them come down when they're unsafe. I mean, I'd like to see them come down now, but obviously-
Well, even if they're not unsafe.
You can't force them to take-
If they, if they need to be repaired, it says, "Sign, alterations to a non-conforming sign, including changes to the sign frame, sign copy, area panels, or structural elements, shall be subject to the following." And then we have this section where it says, "The sign shall be brought into compliance with all applicable sign height and area standards." Do we want to enforce that, or do we want to just let the sign stay there forever?
The way, the way I'm reading that is if, if they're gonna change, so the framework itself is, is busted, that would be, to me, a major-
That's a major, yeah.
But if the panel inside there, they want to change that, change their logo and fix it, they can't do that. They can clean it, they can, you know, I don't know how good plastic gets painted on or redesigned on. You know, some might be, I don't know, I've never seen them, but it, it would seem it would be harder.
Well, we could in, we could include change to copy if we wanted.
That's what I was gonna suggest, that like, if, if we're okay with-
If that's what we want to do.
Yeah. Like, if you allow them to change the copy, but any other change requires them to come into compliance with the height and the area and, and everything else, that's one option. But, uh, but I don't know. I think Mike can do that.
Major repairs to the, so what would trigger having to come into compliance then? If they can change the copy?
I like the alter, I like the alterations.
Mike?
Um, two, two things. We, we brought up the issue of safety. We have no active inspection program for signs anywhere in this city, nor have we ever had. So the idea of safety is, I got a funny feeling we're gonna find out they're unsafe when they fall down. Uh, because there's no active inspection program. And number two, take a what-if. We have a empty store on Ford Road that has a sign that's circa nineteen sixty-two. We'd like to see that changed and be more in compliance with the rest of the things on our main corridor. Let's say Dollar General buys a building. As it exists right now, if we're to change this as being, uh, talked about, Dollar General could put their big giant orange and white sign up there and not do another damn thing to that, that sign post. And, uh, we wish them all the luck in the world, maybe they'd last another twenty or thirty years. That's how long that sign would stay like that. This is something that I don't think needs to be tampered with.
I, I was gonna say, on safety, when, when, don't they have to get a permit to, to change out the sign or do anything to the sign?
Initially, when the sign's put up, yeah.
Well, if they made, if they ma- do any electrical work, they'd have to get an electrical permit.
At some point, well, if you put anything in there that says, you know, that, that says we have to, if you get a permit or something, it has to be inspected. I mean, something, something simple like that that just says, if you're gonna change it, you have to pull through that and we'll, you have to get it inspected. Something like that.
Well, okay, so now it's safe, but it's still there. That we-
Um, it's gonna be there anyways.
Well, not if they want to change it and it's non-conforming. If they want to change it and it's non-conforming, then it would have to be changed to bring it into compliance.
I know, I know there's a couple businesses that have old faded signs that are legally non-conforming that, based on this, are probably not gonna change it. And I don't think it looks good. So, I mean, I guess it's a compromise of, do we allow the business owner, and maybe s- a situation on Kmart to Dollar General, you know, if it's a major overhaul of that, that we put it in your site plan? When they come in for a site plan, it says, you know, uh, a large, you know, I don't know, somehow worded to where they would have to change it.
We can't make them change it if the ordinance doesn't require it.
We, we currently do that with our site plan.
Currently, our ordinance requires it, but-
That's what the current ordinance is, uh, when they do the site plan, that's when we take care of that.
If we change it, we wouldn't be able to make them do that.
Right, but if you have businesses that aren't gonna change, you're, you're stuck with them right now, as is, with an old patterned looking sign. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, you know. That's, I mean, that's, you know, that's up to you guys. I was just asking-
Well, I think-
I, I think there's-
I think we can, we can, we can say servicing the sign is okay, which would include whatever we want it to include.
Right.
Now, if that means changing the copy, we could say that, we could add that. But now it just says, "Painting, servicing, cleaning, or minor repairs." And that's all that's needed for most signs.
Right.
But if we want to allow them to keep these signs, in most cases, we could say that it's okay to change the copy.
And I think if you just eliminated in paragraph C, that one phrase, "The sign is restored to its original design." If you eliminated that, I could see that as allowing the copy to change. Um, but I don't know then if that's slippery, or a slope that Mike doesn't want to go down.
Well, yeah.
In terms of, in terms of the idea that, you're right, it's, and it is a conundrum that communities often face. It's, it's how much do you want to do? And so, so yeah, if, if, to, to eventually get them all signs to be in conformity, something like this is usually on the books.
We hope that all our businesses are gonna be successful and operate very long-term in the city. And those that are able to accomplish that, uh, ultimately, their sign will need to come into compliance. Otherwise, we don't need a sign ordinance. It's that simple. And those businesses that are not successful, when a new business comes in as part of the site plan, that's when that sign will be brought into compliance.
Right.
And it seems to me, anything short of that, and we, we may as well just eliminate the ordinance for sign.
We may still have a little foot to stand on if we, if we keep the height and area down here, but we eliminate in paragraph C where it says, "The sign is restored to its original design." If we eliminate that section. Just eliminate this, but keep this.
Yeah.
Keep all paragraph D as-is? So not, don't make any changes to it?
Keep, yeah. Okay, we would keep, uh, paragraph D two-
Oh, okay.
With the, uh, elim- and not, not say eliminate height and area.
Mm-hmm.
You could add hazard and obstruction requirements, I guess. But I would, I would still like to see height and area kept. I think, I think we should encourage them to service the signs and keep them looking good, but to make any major modifications to that sign, I think we'd like to see them bring it into compliance.
Absolutely. Same thing we do with dumpster enclosures and-
Yeah.
Fences and landscaping. We have many properties that have been here for a long time and when, and many of them have zero landscaping. And when a new business comes into that, that's when we bring that into compliance and try and make Garden City actually more garden-like with a little landscaping.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, are we all good with that? Uh, paragraph C, we, uh, remove the red part. And, uh, D two, we keep the height and area and add hazard and obstruction requirements. Does that work for everybody?
If we have to change something, yeah.
Kim?
Could you change that? Are you saying you would allow them to change the logo or the type on the sign?
Well, we're kind of leaning in that direction by eliminate, eliminating the part in paragraph C that says, "The sign is restored to its original design." Uh, by eliminating that part, it gives us the ability to interpret it basically how we want, I think.
So we then allow, so we have, you-
If, if we have a good sign and somebody wants, I think if somebody would want to just change the copy on it, I think that could be construed to say we allow it.
Providing it's the same business and property owner?
Wouldn't matter, I don't think, would it? No.
So if we have a new business come in, business was our business, we have somebody new come in, they can take that same non-conforming sign, just change the face on it, and they can go? Is that-
Could, well.
So, I, I have to go back. It's like, we have these ordinances for a reason. This allows us to get them to bring these signs into where, where they're supposed to be and meet our ordinance. So why would we allow them to do otherwise?
Exactly.
I got stunted by that. I, I don't get it.
No, with a change of ownership, we should be able to make them come into compliance and get rid of the non-conforming.
Right.
Well, that ownership thing is, is kinda touchy because we can have the same owner and have different businesses come in there.
Yeah, you can have a change of use with the same owner.
And, you know, the bottom line is, we will never get compliance. We've made an ordinance to do a certain thing, and now we're diluting it. We don't need to do anything to this. We, if this ordinance, if, if we want a signed ordinance, now, if the business is successful, and I hope they all are, and I'm not trying to spend anybody else's money, but if they're successful, they can afford to make these changes when the time comes. If they want new logos, if they want different shapes, or whatever the case may be. We don't need to, to legalize non-conforming, which is kinda what we're talking about here. This is something we don't need to touch. We did signed ordinances for two years to try and get to where we're at today. I don't think we need to revisit it just because.
I'm thinking of the older businesses, some of them that have non-conforming signs that are faded and not in good shape, and we're saying they can't change that.
They can paint it.
They can repair them and they can-
They can repair it, they can paint it.
They just can't change something?
They, right. It would have to be restored to the original condition. They, they can restore it to the original condition.
Fix the electrical, paint the post, replace the bolts.
As long as it was replaced, it would be exactly the same thing.
That's what they would have to do if we didn't change this.
Yeah, that's, not necessarily painting plastic, but they can replace it with the same sign.
Right.
They want to change something, then they need to-
Then that-
Right, I, I agree with the change, once it's sold or whatever, that it has to come into compliance. I'm talking about existing or if they change the logo.
Well, if they change the logo, if they don't change, if they don't keep it the same, they would have to bring it into compliance.
And, and the part about when they sell it, we have some business owners in town that have owned buildings for a very, very long time. Those buildings don't get bought and sold when the type of business changes. But when that type of business changes, then they need to come in for whatever in front of us, and that's when we seek to get compliance with the sign. So far as the actual group of buildings or building being sold, there are business owners that have had buildings in this city for many, many decades. And so we can't rely on just when the business gets sold. When the nature of the business changes from a hamburger stand to a shoe store, that's, that's when they come in front of us and we get compliance with the sign to our current ordinance. Uh, one example would be the stretch on Ford Road from Andrews Drugs on down. That has been owned by that gentleman for forty-plus years, I, I believe. Uh, so if we were, if Hershey wanted to put a brand-new sparkling sign up, uh, they would need to come into compliance. They don't own the building. Somebody else does. So when, when they would want to change from, let's say, a Hershey's to an insurance store, that new sign needs to go up there and it needs to be in compliance, even though the building didn't get sold. The business changed, not the ownership of the building.
Doesn't that business, so it's coming here, getting to see the logo, uh, for that?
Yeah, sure, yes.
Yep. That's based upon the approval of the site plan or what happens at the table here. And then the, uh, ordinance concerning signs gets taken care of administratively through Mario, uh, at the time they come forward with, okay, we want to do this with our sign. Uh, we may get a hot dog stand and want to put up a sign like Kmart. Mario's gonna tell them, our current standards are this and that, and that's what you need to work with. You can't put up a monopole that's ninety feet tall anymore.
No, I, I get that.
So.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement. I, I think we should basically keep it as, as it is. Uh, the only thing I'm looking at is, uh, paragraph B, where it says, uh, "Except to bring the sign into greater conformity with location." Well, it should be all requirements, not just location.
Yes.
Except to bring the sign into greater conformity with the requirements of section one, five, four, six hundred through section six, fourteen.
Which is just off the sign regulations.
Yeah. Not, not just location, but-
Right.
All requirements. And the only other thing I, uh... Do we need, in paragraph one D, do we need to add construction and maintenance? Don't we want it in compliance with all the requirements of that section?
Right. Like, if, if you wanted to, I think, other than that other clarification, if you're wanting to go as-is, then would just leave everything else the same?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I would recommend that we keep it as-is. What, how does everybody else feel about it? I know how you feel about it, Mike.
Yeah.
Diane? Good with keeping it as-is?
Yeah.
Randall? As-is?
As-is.
Kevin? Okay, we're gonna, you recommend we keep it as-is?
Okay.
Amendment E, uh, that first paragraph confused me a little bit.
Oh. Uh, the, the italics paragraph, that just, just trying to describe what the current issue is?
Yeah.
Well, basically, um, the zoning ordinance right now requires that the planning, that, not only the Planning Commission, but also the City Council hold public hearings whenever they amend zoning ordinance.
No, I'm sorry, it wasn't that paragraph, it was the next one.
Oh.
Go ahead.
But that's, okay. But that is the issue we were just discussing, is the idea that, that right now, as part of the review process, um, after they have their public hearing in front of you guys for either zoning ordinance, rezoning, zoning ordinance amendment- zoning ordinance amendment, or a special use approval, when they go to council, currently they also have to have a public hearing there. And that's not just one additional meeting, they are, they actually have to get on the agenda to schedule the public hearing. So it's usually at least two, it's two meetings. Yeah, it's two meetings and it's not even right next to each other, because by the time you schedule, you request to schedule it, you need to have the notification requirements. So what this would do is just eliminate that requirement, uh, so that way, because we, the city already meets its statutory requirements for public hearings right here. And it's not to say that public can't go to council and comment when they consider rezonings or these amendments or any special use, it's just that they wouldn't have to have a public hearing.
Okay. Any questions about that? No?
No.
I'm good with that. Okay, modification of the historic district.
Okay. Uh, so the final one in this bundle, uh, well, in this, in front of you is, um, I've had some recent contact with, uh, uh, the gentlemen and people that own the, uh, the Oddfellows House, which is a, a structure that was recently, a lot of refurbishment was done. And that's the, the house that is, um, excuse me, I keep calling it a house. It's a structure that's, that's a meeting hall, that's located on the, the block directly south of the Straight Farmhouse.
Same side of the road.
Same side of the road.
Okay.
And so they own that site, and they own the, the vacant property in between the two on that block. They're interested in, uh, right now it's under private ownership, they're interested in turning it over to the association that runs the Straight Farmhouse, and allow that be a more of a campus type or complex type where they can have different events in that grass space and have that structure used, um, uh, for different type of public events and public meetings. Right now, it's zoned RM, and it's planned as RM. So this would allow for the establishment of a district that would be, uh, and it tweaks it slightly, so that way we're, because right now, as is, it's specifically for just the Straight Farmhouse. This would allow for historic district, historic building structures, not only in this location, but throughout the city. Like, if eventually there's another house, like I could imagine, maybe, you know, I would put a little, um, um, protection on the, uh, the Henry Ford House, that's right over there next to, uh, um, LA Fitness.
Yeah.
So this would, so this would allow for that broader use of it. And this is a good way, a good compromise, I think, because, um, there are a lot of different historic designations. A lot of them don't actually have a lot of teeth, uh, but this would allow for, um, the designation repaced at the local level without necessarily utilizing, uh, historic, uh, preservation standards. Now, whether that's good or bad, you know, that's a method of debate. But at least this way, because normally if you have a local historic district, you have to establish the district, you have to have a board, then you have to write regulations, and then you have to define in the specific area or areas. In this case, it's more of a zoning designation, and it just regulates the use. So basically, it's saying that they could, this would permit them to utilize the Oddfellows Home for, um, events and not just the Street Farmhouse.
I'm sure you're including parks in this?
Yeah, 'cause I wasn't sure in terms of, um, uh, because the, the property in between the structure and, and, um, the, the, uh, the Straight Farmhouse is open area, and they might wanna hold events there. Some kind of festivals or some type of, you know, they're not really sure, but that's the only reason why I was thinking. And actually, public owned and operated parks are already, um, in the district. Like, it's not a change, that's what's included. Currently.
So then there would, there would need to be an additional, um, movement to change the zoning of the Oddfellows Hall to include it.
Right, that would be, this would just be the first step, first to create the district, so that way, because they did, I did have a meeting with them, they're interested in, um, eventually coming, uh, doing some, uh, site design changes. But I didn't wanna, they wouldn't necessarily be able to do that, 'cause that use wouldn't be permitted. Like, I couldn't say that the use of proposing is permitted, 'cause then RM, that type of public use isn't permitted right now.
Are they planning on building a structure there?
No.
'Cause I noticed there were surveyors over there surveying the property.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're not gonna have any structures on the, at least right now, they're not planning it between, on the, um, on the Merriman side, but behind it, if you notice, there was a house and a garage that was there. They own that now, and because they're under common ownership, I, uh, they're considered one zoning lot. So I, so the house could be torn down and the structure, the accessory garage could be remained, 'cause it's all one, it functions as one use. It's, right now, it's legally non-conforming, but creating this district would then make them legally conforming in, in this, in a historic structures district. And allow them to do some improvements. They wanna create a parking lot behind the house.
So they own that, that house directly behind you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forget the name of it.
Has anybody inspected the pole out in front of it that's been at a forty-five degree?
The DTE?
For the last twenty-five year? No.
Oh, that other? Yeah.
Not sure if it's a sign or a flagpole, but.
Hopefully that'd be part of their improvement.
Before it ends up in Merriman.
Does public have anything about this? No?
Looks like a good idea.
Well, we would need to, uh, schedule a public hearing, I guess, for those items that we wanna recommend. So.
And, just as a reminder as such, we can have the public hearing and you're not beholden in the course of that language. You can always change it based on public comment, of course, so. And if I could, uh, one other thing that, um, uh, came up in terms of the regulated uses when I was looking at them, and I wasn't sure if we wanted to include it in this bundle. Right now, tattoo parlors are listed as, as a regulated use, and so they're only allowed in the C-three district after special use approval. And I didn't have a chance to do the research for the last time that was amended, but there, there do, there does seem to be some tattoo parlors that are existing currently in the C-two district, further out on Ford Road. And so we've, uh, had a little bit of interest from, from some business owners wanting to allow for tattoo parlors, uh, in C-two zone. So I wasn't sure if that's something you wanted to consider. Uh, it's, you know, right now, regulate, the, uh, tattoo parlors are bundled with the adult uses as a regulated use. And I wasn't sure if that exists, because it was more of an older ordinance, because a lot of communities in their old ordinances did list tattoo parlors, just 'cause, you know, fifty, sixty years ago, there was a negative connotation with tattoo parlors, but now there's, you know, it's a different mindset. And plus, technically, the definition for tattoo parlor, because it's a, applica, the temporary or permanent application of ink underneath the skin, technically, that still include, that includes services such as permanent makeup, or like this thing called microblading, which I'm still not sure what it is. But, uh, it's something in the eyebrows, and it's technically ink underneath. And so technically, if someone comes and applies, they just wanna be a microblading or just a permanent makeup place, I can't say they're a salon and go, well, could, but I mean, it makes more sense to possibly look at taking tattoo parlors out of regulated use. I wasn't sure, or allowing them at least in C-two as a regulated use. I don't know what your.
Well, do we wanna, we wanna encourage a lot more tattoo parlors?
I, I don't know, it's up to you.
Well, it's, it's viewed.
I know they're popular.
It's viewed entirely differently in this day and age than it was not that long ago.
True.
So, uh...
The microblading is really, a lot of cancer patients, women, get that done when they lose their eyebrows and stuff.
Yeah, sure.
Get that tattooed and everything.
They have a fairly large store for doing it in Westland Mall.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the microblading, yeah. And, uh, I mean, that's their name, it's something, permanent eyebrows and such and such.
Oh, yeah.
The name is like ten foot long, so it's, it's all about the eyebrows. So, it seems like it might be an ideal, time has come. I, I don't think I'll be using it, uh, but, uh...
You don't want new eyebrows?
Mm, no, I, I'll deal with what I got.
Okay. Well, right now, I think maybe we should just look at, uh, scheduling a public hearing for, uh...
For the two.
The, the items that we have before us. Uh, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the two items in question.
We got more than two.
Two main categories?
No, there's six different amendments. Different, six different, uh, sections that are being amended.
So. Um, we still got questions about smoke shops and various other things to go with hookah.
Well, we can have a public hearing and.
You wanna include them all?
Then afterwards, we can make changes or decisions about language.
Okay, yeah. Uh, uh, schedule a public hearing for the six items noted in our, in our agenda this week.
Support?
Support.
Any comments? You take the roll.
Commissioner Steenbur?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativi here?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye. Okay, Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Kalidus? Any comment? Anything?
Anything new from LA Fitness?
Yes.
Demolition plans, maybe?
Well, excuse me, they, they, they did come in, picked up their permit, 'cause they have all their approvals from MDOT and from Wayne County and everything, so they have their permit now. And we did have, today, contractors come in to start pulling individual permits for specialists underneath there to disconnect utilities and to schedule that. So, we're just making sure that.
See him moving on.
When they, we're, we're gonna make contact with them, because we want to, um, make sure they're talking to residents before they, they do constru, uh, demolition, and also to, um, you know, make sure it's safely cordoned off according to, to, code requirements and that sort of thing.
Sure.
Uh, they haven't given us any date as to when the demo would begin, but hopefully they'll speak to us about what's gonna happen.
That's an excellent step in the right direction, and, uh...
And, uh, sorry.
We've only been, oh, is there more for LA?
No.
Oh, I, I was gonna ask about McDonald's to see how they're doing with the county and DTE.
Still all DTE, they, still away, the, the building permit, 'cause they did come in and apply for the building permit, and their application was extended, so they can finally finish everything. I don't know.
I saw two guys from DTE standing on the sidewalk out in front of McDonald's, and I was, oh, yeah.
I guess that's something.
Today?
No, it was last week.
Where they down drunk.
Yeah, they probably broke down. They were getting lunch.
They were getting lunch? I don't know.
Kevin?
Uh, just a question I have about that, we talked about LA Fitness, and we got somebody that's going to watch this demolition, if they're doing it correctly on like maple wood lumber up here that everything splattered all over the road, and I guarantee that building had all kinds of lead paint and things in it, and probably loaded full of asbestos that's floating everywhere now. Are we gonna be watching it closer and make them comply?
That, that is a question I, I had for, for everyone in the department, so we're gonna, that's why we need to contact them, the contractors, to make sure that they're, you know, clients, they submit all their requirements. 'Cause to the best of my knowledge, they do need to have a certified asbestos inspector to go in to determine.
Correct.
That, if it exists, it can exist, but they have to dispose of it in the correct method.
Right.
But it has to be abated before that building just gets knocked down and everything.
It was flying in the air.
Goes up into the sky.
Right, exactly, yeah. It has to be abated correctly, so. And to my knowledge, they have to provide, I thought they have to provide an affidavit from the inspectors stating that they're gonna, everything is gonna be abated, has been abated, as far as I know.
The state has pretty strict laws concerning that.
Yeah, they do.
They do, but things get knocked down all day long, I mean.
Sure.
You get caught out there, um, I'm lead certified, you're talking thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per day. Lialation, for those houses, they're not doing a single thing to it, because it's federal money going in there to pay for it, and they don't, they don't want the extra expense, but I don't wanna see that come down the same way they started working on this one up here.
Right.
That's all I got.
Mario?
Couple other updates, uh, the Shell gas station, they actually did work with, uh, our city engineer. They actually did do all the requirements of the city engineer, and so now their permit is being wait, was, was waiting to be picked up. So they'll be hopefully starting that this construction season as well.
Wow, that's.
Fabulous.
And then we're gonna keep tabs on, um, some of the other, uh, recent applications trying to run through them.
Boy, by the end of this year, if all this comes to fruition, we're gonna have a different-looking Ford Road.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, um, I guess I want, want to note if I can, um, I know normally we always have a holiday party for, for the planning commission members to celebrate accomplishments of the year. And, and we just had it, we were just too, I don't know, I slipped the mind and it was too, too busy. So, uh, we'd like to wrap it as a celebration for Chairman Pistor, he, he's invited to come out. However, in speaking with him, he's actually gonna be, um, out of, out of the state soon. So I wasn't sure if you, if you, if everyone would be available sometime next week before either.
Before he goes?
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Because as the days.
South or north?
South, definitely south. From, from, uh, late February to early April, he'll be in Florida.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would be available.
Wednesdays?
Yeah, Mondays don't get for me, but other than that, I'd.
Wednesday evening?
Wednesday would be good for me. How about you guys?
Yeah? Okay, great. Well, then we'll, uh, schedule that, and I'll, uh, we'll contact you and, uh, it'll be somewhere in the city, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Wednesday looks great. Has, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Pistor signed off on this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why it was Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, they said, well, then we'll see you in the spring.
Great.
Was there anything else?
No, that's it.
Brian?
Nothing.
Okay. I only had, uh, two items that I wanted to maybe have everybody consider adding to our list of possible amendments. And that was, uh, one under, um, vehicular parking, about dropping the ten-foot setback requirement.
Oh, yeah.
We talked about that one. And then, in the CBD, uh, we have a requirement on the facades that require the brick to be blond beige or dull red, and I think that should be just dropped also, because that's not compatible with any of our existing downtown anymore. I think if we just don't put a color in and say, uh, make it compatible with the existing facades, that, that might be the best way to go in that respect, yeah. Mike?
Do you wanna look at the seventy-five percent rule that's also contained within that?
I hadn't, uh, I, I think we should keep the brick. Do you think that should be changed?
Well, we had some concerns with LA about the distance from the road.
Well, that was, yeah, kind of a different situation, because they were so far back off the road.
Sure.
But most of our business district is up on Middle Belt and Ford Road.
Zero.
And that's with fairly zero clearance, and those buildings, we, I think we still wanna maintain that look.
Yeah, I, yeah.
But, uh, those two sections, by the way, are one fifty-four-three-seventy-two A-nine for the setback, and one fifty-four-point-three-five-five F-one A for the brick color. Now, there may be other references to the brick color beyond that one, I didn't check further, but.
I can check.
Yeah. That's, that's all I had. And I, I wanted to ask you too, if, uh, the banquet hall had done anything as far as, uh, more permits or coming into.
Right here on Middle Belt?
Yeah. Nothing? Okay, so that's just set and now.
At the best of my knowledge, the, the, the property owner's been out of the country, so.
Oh, okay.
And no movement on Ford Road, CVS?
Oh, they, they are gonna be coming in front of the, uh, ZBA this month.
This month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Both them and Bo, and King Kong. For their, uh, driveway, driveway access.
Right. Right. All right, well, I don't have anything else. If, uh, there's nothing else, uh, have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.